The Muck Breakers presents In the Loop with your host Justin Loop and co-host Sunday Shively. Here we discuss what's hidden in plain sight.
Hello there. You're listening to In the Loop with Justin Loop. Don't forget to subscribe, hit that like button, make sure you give us thumbs up, do everything you can to support this channel so that I can get you the latest and greatest information. And don't forget to share. It is incredibly important to get this information out to all your friends, family, and all those you think need this information. Let's discuss what's hidden in plain sight.
All right, welcome back to Muck Breakers. Sunday has brought in a couple of great people you want to talk about. Who you brought in?
I have brought in Nikki Lightway who is running for Willis ISD and John Sellers who is also running for Willis ISD. And we're just here to find out a little bit more about what made them decide to run for the board.
All right. What motivated you to get involved with the school board?
Well, I can say what motivated me to get more involved with the school board is to get more involved and have a voice. Because I'm a very involved parent in the district and I go to the meetings and I'm at the schools all the time. And I feel like I know nothing, even though I'm there. And so I could just imagine how those parents are who have to work to provide for their family, who have to, you know, take care of their families and not there. So how are they getting the important information that they need? How do they know of all these, this information, these decisions that are being made? You know, because I'm there and I still don't know about it, you know, until it happens and it's being voted on that it's unanimous.
And this is, this is Willis ISD?
This is Willis ISD.
We just had CISD members who wanted to be on the board come in, said the same thing, same thing.
Wow.
It's unbelievable.
It is.
Across board.
It is.
Well, how about you?
I mean, uh, family, that's the real reason. I mean, I've got two daughters and a son in the district. My wife is a kindergarten teacher in the district. And um, to me, it really has to do with putting families first. And I realized that not all families look alike or made up of the same, you know, mother and dad. Not everybody's traditional, but at the end of the day, nobody is caring for these students more than their parents. And their parents ought to have a right in their education. And I'm, I'm seeing that and witnessing that firsthand. The other issue, like I said, my wife was a kindergarten teacher and these teachers are vitally important to the growth and learning of our children. And they're being dealt with very poorly by the administration over in Willis ISD. I heard a figure that the turnover in Willis ISD is about as high as it's ever been. My wife, all the time, is constantly hears threats from administrators that if you don't want to teach exactly what you want, the way we want it to, when we want it to, then their message is you go find another job. You're definitely replaceable. And that is absolutely heartbreaking to our teachers who have, who have, over the years crafted lessons plans. They know how their students are capable of learning. And it's not a one size fits all type of program. Teachers need to have the freedom to teach. And we're taking that away from them. And I worry that some of the stuff that's slipping through the cracks in our curriculum is going to have horrible impacts on what, what these students, you know, the way we shape their values and how they make judgments. And um, I just feel like the current school board, they've had a pretty good amount of time. There's two incumbents running, their brother and sister, one is seeking a fifth term, the other is seeking a fourth term. And that's part of the problem too, because I feel like we need fresh eyes on things. And one of the things that I pledged is that I don't, I don't want to run for more than two terms. I don't want to serve longer than eight years if I am, you know, elected. And I think that's something important that even though there are no term limits for school boards in the state of Texas, I know that I don't need to be on that board for 20 years like some of the other members have. Just because other need, other people need the opportunity to bring in their ideas and they really, you know, should have the opportunity to serve should they want to.
Two things I want to say really quick. You invited other members to come in to have a discussion too, so.
Yeah, I did invite incumbent Kristen Arnold. I believe she is the incumbent for the position you're running for, correct?
Correct.
We offered her a special segment. She did decline, said she had something with her husband. I also invited Cliff Williams who is running for position five, which is the president of the board, which that Doris was on last week. And he was invited on today, Cliff Williams was. He did not get back in touch with me, so I'm going to take that as a decline. I just want to let it be known that the other incumbents and other candidates were invited. Scott Gentry, I did send him several messages asking for his email to get him invited. He seemed like a great guy, but he also did not get back in touch with me. And Scott Carson, I did invite him, but he said he needed to be at the polls. But I feel it's important to get your message out to everyone.
And the other, the other thing I wanted to say too is, the reason I wanted to bring that up first was because it kind of leads into something else I'm about to bring up and what John was saying here is that it seems like we're no longer educating our kids. In fact, we are turning it into training factories. So you're automating, that's my word, because that's my, my world, but you automate the teachers. This is, this is what you're going to do. These are the specific plans that you're going to do. This is the instruction set that you're going to read and you're going to do those to the T. If you don't, we're going to kick you out. We're going to put a new program in or no person to read my program here. So that's, that's kind of how I operate because I program computers. And that's, you expect computers to act like that, not humans. And it sounds to me like you want to put the power back into the teacher's hands because that's what their education is.
We want actual instruction and not indoctrination.
Yes.
That's really what it boils down to. And we feel like some of this stuff that's coming in, in the curriculums are, that's exactly what it is. It's programming. It's indoctrination. And we've got to, you know, be active as board members to stamp that kind of stuff out wherever we see it. I know that we had a very high level administrator that was with the district for the past few years. And he, you know, made no bones about his politics concerning those type of areas. He prided himself on a designation of being an equity champion. And that's not something that he posted, you know, here locally for the local people to see, but it was the way that he marketed himself as an educational consultant to a number of other school districts in the state. And it's, it just kind of, it does not go along with the community values that I know that we have in Willis, Texas and surrounding areas. And so it's disheartening to find out about stuff like that and to know that, you know, our school board members who are currently serving as incumbents all claim to be conservative Republicans. And, you know, that's, that doesn't fulfill the message. And it's, it teaches our kids completely the wrong type of values and attitudes concerning, you know, their own work ethic and, and what you can achieve with your own work versus, you know, something that might be handed to you based on what group you belong to.
What I've heard a lot from parents in Willis ISD is we live in a conservative area. This is not in our school. I have myself submitted public information request forms, et cetera. And I have exposed some things that are in library books. They are in the library books, but they are sexually explicit that go against Texas penal codes. We're not allowed to speak to, about them during school board meetings because they are in reconsideration. And so what could you guys do as being on the board to, to help get this type of sexually explicit materials out of Willis ISD?
Well, how did it get there in the first place? Like it has to go through a process, I would hope. So my first thing would be the knowing my position and what I'm able to do as far as being a board member. How, how do we become privy to that information? Because to me, I'm, I'm hoping and praying that the board members were, was not aware that this was going on. You know, so, but that we should be aware because we're the ones going to be hearing about it in the, from the parents. Like we should know what's going into our libraries. We should know what our students are going to be reading and being taught. So my thing would be is, I mean, I would definitely would like to know, how did that even happen?
Does it seem like it was possible a rubber stamp that somebody just said, okay, we, we trust, here's your rubber stamp, go librarians or something of that nature or what's your?
I mean.
I know this is speculation, but I.
Well, it's something that would have come across the superintendent's desk for sure.
Okay.
And I mean, school boards in Texas, the way they're set up is, you know, a lot of trust and a lot of power is placed in the superintendent to make those type of decisions. And so I would not be surprised if it didn't come in front of the current members at all. But they should still be held accountable because at the end of the day, they're the ones holding the superintendent accountable. And it looks like some of this stuff has made it into our schools. And I'll be honest and say that I'm not the biggest proponent of censorship. I'm not. I just believe that information should pretty much be free flowing. Now, if it is something that is, you know, sexually explicit in nature, that definitely shouldn't be a part of this, part of the curriculum. It definitely shouldn't be an available library book. But um, you know, several people, none of you included, have mentioned maybe a classification system so that parents can get a good idea of, you know, what kind of content is in the book that they see their, their kids bringing home. And I think that's a great idea. And it should be a pretty simple feat to accomplish with a local, you know, committee of parents who, you know, have, hear about certain titles and certain content. And, you know, we, we might come up with the, you know, like a, I hate to say a rating system, but something along those lines to at least let the parents know, you know, what, what the general content or, you know, if there's anything objectable in this book, they might be able to grab it and get their hands on it before the kid gets, you know, too deep into it. That's just something I was thinking from a very common sense type of approach.
Yeah, we have rating systems for movies.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Music.
Definitely.
So to my understanding, TASB is, in their training, telling school board members to just blindly follow their superintendent. And, and my conversations, to my understanding, that's what's going on in Willis is, I was told they fully trust their superintendent. So in my opinion, that's how they are getting their unanimous vote on all of these books, et cetera. So would you be willing as a school board member to be the one that stands up and says, no, I don't agree because my constituents do not agree with this?
Absolutely. Because if it's something that I don't agree with, listen, that's one of my biggest things because I go to the meetings. And when, as long as they're back there deliberating and keep us out there waiting for them, you cannot make me believe that all seven people have the same opinion and agree on the same stuff. Because we're all created differently. We all have different opinions and thoughts. But when they come back out into the constituents that voted for them, it's all unanimous. Seven to zero. Listen, if I didn't agree with you back, back in the back room, I'm not going to come out in front of the people that I'm representing and agree with you there. Because they need to know where I stand on something. I do, I am going to be the one that's not afraid. Because if I don't agree, I'm not going to vote. I may lose the vote because I'm one person. I may be the only one there not agreeing, but I mean, I have to stay true to what I believe.
You've got your principles.
I have, that's right. And so it doesn't matter if I'm outnumbered. I'm not afraid to keep my hand down if I don't agree with something.
Yeah.
I'm not afraid of that because I think the constituents need to see that. Because it's not, everything's not unanimous.
Well, one thing I'd like to also, I, I bring this up every so often. It's the 12th man principle. So you might have 11 people agreeing on everything, but that 12th person should probably at least raise their hands and say, wait a second, what are we actually agreeing to? And I think, I think that's kind of what you're alluding to right here, right?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
I think that's super important.
It's very important. Because that's the one thing I noticed as a parent when I started going to the meetings. I'm like, man, they keep us waiting for like an hour or longer sometimes while they're back deliberating. And when you come out, you mean everything that y'all discussed back in close quarters, you know, I mean, y'all should have gotten it quicker than that. What are y'all doing? You know, and I'm just like, and that was one question I asked the people like, are y'all conversing back there? Or is anyone opposing anything? And they, they, they claim that they are, but then, so who convinced you? I mean, if y'all are back there that long, who convinced you to vote unanimously? I mean, because you can't make me believe that all seven people, I mean, there's going to be some opposition there somewhere.
And there's no public record of what the opposition.
Exactly. And to me, there needs to be some, that's why I say I'm, I'm going to stand firm on what I believe in. And if I don't, if I'm not agreeing back there, when I get out in front of the constituents, I'm not going to agree then. Because it's not how I feel. And I need people to know that I'm standing up for what I believe in.
To me, it's almost, it really does beg a lot of questions when you have all these unanimous votes and seemingly very little discourse or debate in front of the public on the open meetings items. And so it begs the question, are they discussing business in closed meetings that should really be discussed in an open meeting? That's a big concern I have because I worked as a financial auditor for school districts, about a little more than 80 of them all around the state of Texas. And I can tell you that other school districts do not have the system where everything is unanimous. It's very natural for school board members to have a little bit of debate and discussion before, you know, they take a vote on things. And it's just something I'm not seeing here in Willis. And so it, you know, certain things, sometimes people are called on, you know, and recognized for a motion before they've even made it or a second to a motion. They know exactly who's going to make it. The optics of that, you know, whether it's true or not, you know, they do raise a lot of questions. And, and that's something else I'd also like to bring up is raising questions. Why is that a bad thing? Why are we being accused of being disloyal? And there's a quote that we were talking about earlier, and I think it comes from Edward R. Murrow. But he essentially was a big thing of his, we must never confuse dissent with disloyalty. And that means that as citizens in a democracy, we have a right to disagree. We have a right to question. And just because we're raising those questions doesn't mean that we're an enemy. It's just, we're trying to make this better. That's the entire reason for us running. And it's, it's pretty, I feel pretty awful about some of the things that have been said about me and Nikki and Mr. Doris, who's also running, that, you know, we're out to, you know, disrupt things and turn over everybody's Apple cards and fire them and fire them. And none of it's true. I mean, we love Willis ISD. We want to make it stronger. But unless, you know, we keep our own house in order, that's not going to happen. And part of that is asking questions. And just because we're asking a question does not mean that we're bad people or against the district in any way. That's, that's something I think is widely being ignored.
Yeah.
What I find when somebody says that, they're, they're saying, you know, point the finger and say, you're disruptors. It's usually them that are the disruptors and they're propagating that over to the individuals that they're pointing the fingers at. Right? It's total projection. It's 100% projection. And I see that everywhere. Whenever they're doing something, they'll project that onto somebody else, so.
Yeah.
We know that through Gulf Coast Conservative Agency, there are 12 or 13 other agencies that can do the same training as TASB. Would you guys be willing to possibly explore some of these other groups that don't say just blindly follow your superintendent?
Absolutely. And I felt like TASB kind of has a monopoly on those trainings. Because they, they make you feel as board members that when you come in, that that's the only way to get those hours. I mean, it's the same with, you know, entities like the Texas Municipal League with city councils and the, there's an organization for counties also that has a similar thing for county commissioners. And it's, it's something that I know our state legislators really do try to fight back against because they do feel that a certain amount of those trainings is to sort of, you know, give a little bit more credence to administrators. And I mean, you're seeing this kind of stuff happen in the city of Conroe, Conroe ISD, now Willis ISD. It really does, you know, this, this training that we're getting is not supposed to come with any agendas or, or anything like that. It should be just, you know, the basics without any slants. I'm kind of anxious to get in there. I actually kind of do want to participate in the TASB training just because I want to see for myself what exactly they are pushing out there along those lines of, you know, you have to put all your faith and trust in the administrator that you hire. And one thing that's happening right now with the superintendent in Willis is you hear a lot about this team of eight, this hashtag team of eight. And what that is, it's essentially trying to get his board members into the mindset that he and them together are this team of eight. Well, that's fine, but where is the line between employer and employee? And I feel like that that kind of narrative, that kind of promotion, promoting that sort of thing is very much blurring that line that that superintendent has a responsibility to the elected school board, those elected school board members. They're held accountable by the voters and the community members. And I think that that's what you're seeing now. I mean, I don't know if you've visited the parking lot up there in Willis at the North Montgomery Community Center, but I mean, it is a signed city and there are people out that have asked us, how can we volunteer? How can we campaign? I mean, we have that parking lot flooded with people and it definitely is upsetting the establishment.
Yes.
And so we're, we're actually really happy with the way things are turning out. And we think we have a really good shot of flipping this thing and, and bringing a little bit more control back to the community.
So if I were to say that they're acting a little roguish on their own, acting as an independent entity, doing their own thing without letting their constituents, you know, the folks that elect you in as representative, well, they're no longer representing the folks that elected them. So right now, as you're, as I see it, they're acting very roguish, right? Is that sound about right?
Well, they're, they're definitely trying to putting out mixed messages. We've all been personally attacked for some of the stances that we take. And what's funny about it is, is their stances that they actually, you know, said that they were going to take, but they just, you know, it's been all talk and no action so far. They've had plenty of time to, to make the corrections and it just hasn't been done.
And back to the TASB training, I am, like I've been telling everyone, like, I, one of the biggest things about me running, I was so nervous. I was like, how am I going to compete with someone that's been on there for 14 years? You know, they're going to know the answers whenever we go through the forums. And so I was like, I don't know. And my background is in healthcare. And my thing is, is of course I want to see all the trainings out there. But I do want to go to TASB because I want to see what they're pushing, what they're learning. But I want to learn as much as I can because I want to make the best informed decision and know my rights, know what I'm able to do. So that way, when I represent the constituents, I have done my due diligence in learning all aspects of what I'm able to do and openly know what, what I'm having to do, you know? So I want to do it all. I don't want them to just not, I don't like that they just tell, I don't like when anyone just tell me, oh, you can only do this specific training when there's other trainings. Don't do that. You know, I want to learn it all. So I'm, I plan on doing as much training as I possibly can because I want to learn to be a good elected candidate for my constituents.
If I was close to you, I'd give a big old high five to you. Because it is all about knowledge. Knowledge is power. You know more, the more you know, the better you can handle what's out there.
That's right, that's right.
And just getting one set of training doesn't really set you up properly. I mean, if you think about any profession, you're always going through some level training to understand. You know, maybe there's a different way. Maybe there's a better way. Maybe, uh, maybe there's a new safety thing that you figure out. Maybe there's new equipment out there, right?
That's right.
And you can implement that stuff. So I'm.
That's right.
We all have to be lifetime learners, you know? Because once you get into your mindset that you know it all, you'll never learn another thing in your life.
That's right.
And so that's always been a big part of my personal philosophy is that I'll be learning until the day I die. Because, I mean, that's truly what wisdom is, is the ability to recognize your, your own ignorance and try to correct it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on SEL?
It's social emotional learning.
Yeah, social emotional learning. That's been a hot topic.
In the school district? Why?
Well, I, I don't feel like they've really done a good job of even defining that, you know, what is it? You know, because I've heard it categorized in a number of different ways. And, um, you know, I understand that some of our kids have emotional issues at home and things that they're trying to deal with. And I don't have any problem with the school district trying to step in and give some support. But going back to the whole programming and indoctrination thing, I hear that we're kind of going down that road with it more and more. And, and that's what's concerning to me is that, you know, I, I want to know more about it first of all, to be able to make some proper judgments. But yeah, I've, I've really heard mixed things about it. And so it's, it's something I'd like to explore. But if half the things I'm hearing about it, it's not something really that's, that's helping out our kids. It's not that supportive. It is kind of maybe leading down more that indoctrination road. And I hope that's not true. I really do. And, you know, if, if anybody out there knows different and wants to set me straight, you know, please do. But it sounds like one of these really loaded terms, you know, that kind of sounds good and makes you think, oh, it gives you the warm fuzzies and it's going to be great. And then you find out, you look into the details and it's not something you're, you know, you can get behind at all.
The thing that I know about SEL, there's two parts to that. First, it is very subjective in that it's always a moving target.
It's not quantifiable.
Yeah, you'll never figure out what it is because you'll never have metrics.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, from what I've seen, is it puts their emotions in front of everything. And I gave this example, I said, you know, if I ask my daughter, hey, uh, I want you to do math. You know what she's going to say? Oh, I hate math. I don't feel like it. Of course, you're putting your feelings in front. So, okay, well, we won't do math because it hurts your feelings. And that, that to me is where I see a huge red flag.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we're going.
And that's what I was thinking because I've kind of been reading some stuff on that. Yeah, I was reading some stuff on that. And that's kind of what I was thinking that it was when I started researching it. And I started looking at more things than I had Sunday about it. And I'm just looking at different things on YouTube and just different things. And that's what I got from it. And I'm thinking, you know how many times I asked my son, let's read a book or let's study this, let's work on this math problem you had trouble with. Oh, I don't feel like it. It's not about how you feel. It's about what we got to do to learn this. Because I mean, do you know, to me, that, what I got from it is given an excuse. And I like to do away with excuses, you know, like every kid is going to learn that method and they're smart. Smarter than we give them a lot of credit for. They're going to learn. I can tell the teacher, oh, I don't feel like this right now. And they're going to pass it. I mean, I don't know if that's, but that's kind of what my perspective of what I thought. And that's not how I want my kids learning because I'm, I fight that at home, you know? I fight that at home. My kids don't feel like doing anything dealing with school once they get home. They just want to play the video games. So my thing is, is if that's where we're going down, absolutely not. They're not going to feel like any of it. They're not going to want to do it and they're not going to like this subject. But it's our obligation to educate these children and to hold them accountable because life doesn't work that way.
That's right. That's right. You work hard now.
That's right.
The, the whole concept, you know, of, you know, putting your emotions first and making emotional judgments, to me is just something I've always personally tried to avoid. Because typically my first, you know, emotional response after being confronted with something is not typically the response that I would give after I've taken some time to, you know, really look at the facts and the data. And it really, I mean, we should be striving to make practical, pragmatic decisions that we know that will work. And typically emotional responses are typically, you know, not the best decisions that are made. And that's just, you know, let's do something that works, you know? It's, it might be great if we do something that makes us feel good, but if it's not really accomplishing anything at the end of the day or possibly even hurting us, that might be something we need to back off of.
Yeah. It's all, anything irrational tends to lead down the bad path, I think.
Yes.
So.
So another question I have is with the Student Health Advisory Committee. What do you guys know about the Student Health Advisory Committee and what they do? And who is supposed to be on the Student Health Advisory Committee? And, you know, getting members on the Student Health Advisory Committee, also known as SHAC.
I don't know much about that, to be honest with you. I don't. But that's one of the things, again, I'm sure there's literature and I'm sure there's training that board members and everybody that's involved has to go through to know more about that, to know about how many members are supposed to be on there and things like that. I mean, so my thing is, are we following what we're trained to do? Are we getting the best informed information? Or are we, I mean, are we making things up as we go? Like that's the stuff that I want to learn about. That's the things I want to know because I know that parents are interested in things like that.
So the Student Health Advisory Committee, they are a group of parents and community members.
Okay.
I believe a health official. And they vote on like the, the health books, et cetera. Well, I don't know if you guys are aware, but there was a health book that was up for vote. And we took a letter of every precinct chair in Montgomery County that voted against this book, including our county chair. And it took forever, but I finally found out that this book was voted in unanimously. Amazing, right? Yeah.
Wow. Okay. So they picked the books that are being taught in the health class.
Health, sex education, et cetera.
Again, that goes, so that what we said earlier about who, who gets that information? Like, are we privy to that? Like, does it go on the, are we trusting the superintendent to make those decisions? Are we just trusting that he's read that and that we're going to trust his opinion on that book? Or are we all taking the time out to look at that book and figure out what's going on? See, because me, I could trust you all day long, but I'm not going to stamp my approval on anything until I've done my due diligence and my research.
Absolutely.
Period. And that's just how I function in life, you know?
That's a continuing theme so far. Ever since the inception of Muck Breakers. It's like, you know, we put so much trust in these institutions and let them do, get away with so much. And then now that in COVID-19, everybody says, oh, it's a blessing because it just knocked everything wide open. Everybody got to see what was actually going on. It was the transparency that wasn't given to us.
Yeah.
And so people wised up and realized, you know what, we need to understand what the heck is actually going on. So, I mean, that's kind of, that's the thesis that I've got, so.
Yeah, me too. Me too. Because like I said, Willis, I got told is, oh, we're a conservative area. That's not in our schools. And I have proved that to be incorrect, that it is in Willis ISD.
Yeah. Another thing that kind of goes along with this is the IB program. So Sunday brought up what the IB program was. I'd never heard of it, but the International Bachelorette Program.
Yeah, International Bachelorette. I haven't checked into if it's in Willis ISD. I'm also on the Education Committee for Montgomery County. So I've done several different school districts. So I haven't checked with Willis ISD, but they are actually from the U. So I haven't checked with Willis ISD, but they are actually from the U N.
Globalist ideas. I'm aware of, of what they're trying to do. And it's, uh yeah, they're very much pushing, pushing a, a global sort of political rhetoric versus, you know, versus the national, I'll say it, nationalism, which is, I, I don't think, I don't have a problem with nationalism. There's nothing being, there's nothing wrong with being, with being patriotic and, and paying homage to the great things that we've accomplished here in the United States. I mean, our history has not been perfect by any means. But I feel like we, the leaders in our country have always made an effort to recognize those injustices and, and correct them. But the way that some of the correcting is being done these days, it's just, it's taken on its own political tone. Completely out of hand. But no, there's, we, we should embrace our history, the good parts and the bad parts. And not be afraid to pass that along, you know, in full truth. And so this idea of globalism, I think, is, is harming kids here, because they're, they're made to feel bad if they're being patriotic. And that's not, that's not the message that I want coming out of our schools.
Yes. I did look up under board policy, I don't remember where it was, but it does state that um American patriotism is to be taught to our students. Well, one of the books that I exposed in the library, not only is sexually explicit, but it has a whole chapter dedicated, it's chapter five, and it's called A Blinkin Life to Me. And it states that um American history is, I believe the word he used was a fable. Whenever I got back my responses, it was stated that this book was picked for factualization. Um I believe it's entertainment and reading, um don't quote me exactly. Um I don't see how that goes with American patriotism.
Just real quick, this was also on a previous podcast, it's, you know, you gotta see it. It's incredible. It really is. Yeah, it, it, your mind would be blown. She, she wrote down stuff on this piece of paper, and I looked at it, I'm like, you can't say that on this podcast. It's just that bad. And so I was like, you know, we'll get flagged and taken down everywhere, even anyways. So, well, did you have anything else?
I believe in that.
All right, well, we're at the thirty minute mark, and I wanted to give you to the opportunity, uh one or two to address the audience and talk about anything you, you want.
Again, my name is Nikita Lagway. I go by Nikki, running for position one for the Willis ISD School Board. And my reasoning for running was so that I could be a voice for the voiceless. Listen, I know we have to work, and as parents, we've been taken out of the, out of the school system. It's time for us to get back involved, get back included. It's time to stop feeling isolated from the schools and the administration. Because guess what? They're teaching our kids. They're teaching our babies, our future. So we need to have a say and have a, be in the know more than anyone. And I just believe in a fresh set of eyes um on everything. Um nothing against anyone, but sometimes too long is too long, you know. And it's just time to let someone else take over and um get some fresh ideas, new thoughts, and um ideas in place. Um so um I just wanna be a part and um connect the community back with the parents. I mean, with the administration, which the community is the parents and the teachers. So I just wanna connect everybody back together. Because there is such a huge disconnect right now, and it's time to, it's time out. It's time for all the division. It's time, it's time out for so many things that are going on. And I'm just honestly, I was very um sick of all the unanimous voting. You know, that just hit me, hit a spot in me that I was just like, you mean to tell me seven people? All seven people agree on everything all the time? I just, I just don't understand it. So I mean, yeah, maybe that voice that's gonna stand up, stand out, but hey, I'm willing to do it for the constituents, for the parents, for the teachers. To be, I, I don't want people to feel like they're gonna be picked on or bullied for having an opinion or speaking up for things that they believe in. So I just wanna be that bridge. I wanna close that gap. It's, I'm sick of the division. And so I'm just ready to serve to learn, because I know there's so much to learn, and I'm ready to learn on all levels. And be the, uh, an informed board member, so I can make an educated, informed decision and hear both sides. Not only what we're learning in the training, but hear what the parents have to say too. And I wanna be able to um have a voice and have a say and bring back the parents into this community, uh into this uh school board, into this school. Because we are allowing our children to go and learn every day there. We should have a say in what's going on. And so I appreciate your vote for position one, Nikita Lagway. Get out there and vote, have a voice.
Um my name's John Sellers. I'm running for position three, uh not against an incumbent, but um, you know, that, that really shouldn't matter. The reason that I'm running is uh, well, and I'll tell a story. So back uh, it was three, four months ago, uh one of the board members, she resigned so that she could, you know, run for the Lone Star Community Board. And so the board kind of decided together, rather than have another election, that they would seek to appoint somebody from the community to fill that vacancy. And I mean, you can feel how you want about that. I don't think it was probably the best thing for us to do. I think we should have had a special election since one was so close. I mean, she literally resigned, you know, a few days, you know, more than ninety days in front of this election. I think it would have been a good opportunity to, to have, you know, the people have a little bit more of a voice. But during that appointment process, and Nikki, you went through it as well, right? We were, you know, the superintendent held a workshop where he kind of explained, you know, the roles of a school board and, you know, the kind of things you wanna do, the kind of things you don't wanna do. And, and in that, he was saying, you know, if you're appointed, you're gonna get a lot of phone calls. And um he, the words out of his mouth, pretty close to verbatim, was that both parents and teachers are two of the biggest complainers out there. And that really struck a chord with me, and he may have been saying it in jest, but still though, those people are not complainers. Those are the stakeholders of our district. And if he's just, you know, kind of willing to sort of, you know, push them aside and categorize them as quote unquote complainers, I have, I had, it gave me real concerns about what we call the tone at the top. Which is pretty much the tone that sets the entire attitude for the whole district. And so what, I, I know if he's saying that to us, the school board members, he's likely carrying that same message on to the administrators below them. And that message gets carried down to the administrators below them. If our teachers and parents, our biggest shareholders and stakeholders are complainers, how can we ever hope to accomplish anything? Because that's where a lot of solutions start, is essentially recognition of a problem. And if you're not even willing to hear somebody out as far as what their problems are, if you're willing to dismiss them as complainers, how do we move forward? And so that's, that's my biggest thing, is that it's, I think it's just time for a change in general. That um, you know, it's time to put families first. That's, that's really the end of it. And I, I, I want my family to be considered in decisions made by the school board. And I want everyone else's families to be considered. We've gotta make decisions that are best for our families and not best for the administrators of an organization. And I just, I feel like that that's, that's the reasoning behind most of our decisions right now. It's, it's what's better for, you know, those who administer the organization and not necessarily the shareholders and stakeholders of that organization. So that's uh, that's me. Again, John Sellers, Willis ISD Board Trustees, position three. I'd really like your vote.
So instead of just having another line item on your resume, you're saying that you're gonna advocate. I hear, I hear this resonance for both of you. We're gonna advocate for the stakeholders, which is the students, the teachers, and the community. That's, that's a good message, I think. I think that's a really good message.
I do too. And I've spent several days out in front of the polls, getting to know all of the candidates. I've spent a lot of time speaking with Nikki. I've spoken with John, and I do believe that they are behind what they're saying.
That's awesome. All right, well, we're gonna go ahead and sign off at the forty minute mark. I wanna thank you very much for tuning in and uh listening.
Yeah, any way we can get the word out is, is a plus, so we definitely appreciate what y'all are doing.
Yeah, no worries. All right, well, Justin Luke here. Take, take care of yourself. Thank you for watching.
All right, thank you, and we will see you again next week.
Hello, everybody. You've been listening to In the Loop with Justin Loop and Sunday Shively. This is a Muckbreaker production. As you know, Muckbreakers sit through the muck to find the good, talking about life, liberty, and hope. If you feel like the information that we provided you is valuable, we ask that you please hit the like button, hit the subscribe button. Stay in touch by going to the muckbreakers.org. We also want to encourage you to go to City Pulse Page. That's citypulsepage.com. If you wanna give some great books to your kids, consider going to tuttletwins.com. Make sure that you reference Muckbreaker. That's tuttletwins.com/REF/muckbreaker. Another really great place to find books for your kids is Brave Books, at bravebooks.com, and just let them know that Muckbreaker sent ya. The Muckbreakers sent you to bravebooks.com to get some fantastic books. Thank you so much. Any views or opinions expressed by the guests on this podcast are solely their opinion and do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Muckbreaker team.